Thank you, everyone, for coming to this special city council meeting. We have a bulletin. First, the gavel has gone missing. This is a backup gavel, so there's not anything to gavel it on. And councillor Bagley sent me this earlier today, but Colby Stevenson, Portsmouth-born native, won a silver medal in the Olympics in freestyle skiing. That is pretty impressive. I'm sure we'll do more to celebrate that in the future, but that is some great news, but not what we are here to talk about this evening. That's the McIntyre. We'll go through roll call, then we're going to go to public comment. Nobody needed to sign up. We just ask you come up after we get the roll call through and try to keep it to around three minutes.
Mayor McKeconan?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Tabor?
Here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Councillor Leelock?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here.
All present, your honor.
All right. So, we're going to go through, again, residents first. Come speak into the mic, then we'll go through if there's any Zoom attendees. Three minutes. Again, this is a meeting call to act upon legal advice, but happy to hear and want to hear from the public. So, if there's anyone with anything to say, please rise to the microphone.
Evening. My name is Roy Helsel, 777 Middle Road, Unit 22. I don't understand it. If their partner to the city, why are they so dominant? They don't go along with what the citizens want for the McIntyre lot. We've had a great, how should I say, drawing that when we went to the new developer and the guys put what the citizens have asked for. We want open land. We want green space. We don't want big ugly buildings. My granddaughter just came after about six, seven years to visit. She says, "Boy, place looks ugly." And the people look poor. She says Hampton looks much nicer than this place. That's all I have to say. Hope you make a good choice.
Thank you, Roy.
Sue Polidora, 245 Middle. And I'm really not certain about the motivation of tonight's meeting, but I just wanted to come and let you know my point of view, that if this is, if your motivation is to get rid of the lawsuit that is planted right now by Red Gate Kane, I have to tell you that if that happens, you're going to see other lawsuits. It's not going to be the very last one. Two councils ago, agreed to this contract while ignoring 700 signatures from residents against it, and they still went with their Red Gate partnership. It's a long time, resident Portsmouth, but it is obvious to me that people are not behind, who are not behind the development and have not been from the beginning. They want something on that location to benefit the entire city, not just a few people. Thousands of hours went to seek out input from residents. Is that now going to be discarded as though it never happened and it doesn't matter? The city has already received a credible request of interest from developing the concept from the principal group. What's going to happen to that? And was well broadcasted, well-publicized, the developers said he can do it. And on the other side, you have the developer, Mr. Kane himself, who is on record saying that the plan that the people came up with is unbuildable and cartoonish. Now, this is, it was on the paper, is on record everywhere. And it will come to question why our city council wants to partner with someone that considers that plan that the principal group came up with based on feedback from the resident Portsmouth to be unbuildable and cartoonish. If it is unbuildable, he can build it. And if he can't build it, why are you considering it? So, there's just a few things that I'm just thinking about, and I really don't understand what this is all about, but I look forward to see what the evening unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bill Binney, 35 Wentworth Road in Ryan. May I take my mask off or keep it on?
Oh, we keep them on here. And I just want to, is there any?
Any other Portsmouth residents? Sorry?
All right.
I was waiting. Okay. As many of you know, I've known many of you for a great many years, in some cases decades, and I live and, excuse me, work right next to the McIntyre in the old city hall. I did not want to engage and provide a solution to the McIntyre when it was originally proposed some number of years ago, because frankly, I knew exactly what would happen, and I've been sadly not disappointed, because it is exactly what I thought would happen. And I think the process has been deeply flawed with the way it has been run and managed. Now, I did respond to the last RFP in December, which I thought was legally binding. I don't know if it is. We'll find out this evening. But the amazing thing is that I have received nothing, nothing, from the city of Portsmouth as a result of my 75-page presentation, including financials, dozens of hours of conversations, including with the principal group and the principals of the principal group, studying the proposals that were before and after, hiring architects, engineers, site engineers, having significant numbers of walks around the site, and to not even receive, as so much as thank you, we have your proposal, is disappointing at least. Now, here's what I want to say to you guys. You have an option. I have built millions of square feet of space around the planet. This is an easy project for us. We have done award-winning projects with Laconia, Concord, Manchester, and many other large cities in New Hampshire, all with city government, very much like this sort of proposal we're working on. And it's not that hard. It's been made very hard for lots of different reasons, but it doesn't need to be. We don't view this as a complicated project at all. It's a renovation of a 70,000-square-foot facility that has asbestos and hot materials in it. We're very familiar with that. And it's got a number of other issues, all of which are very manageable for someone who has our experience. Among other things, we're a developer for Amazon, and we have built millions of square feet in the U.S. in the last five years. This is a small project for us, internally financed and done at the lowest possible cost. And just as importantly, what we've presented will make it for next 75 years, because if you think about this, whatever it is you agree to do, it has to stand on its own two feet. I'm willing to do this because I'm almost 65, and it's one of the last projects I'm going to do with my career. That's why I'm willing to do it. Do you want me to obey that or stop?
Please obey. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Justin Richardson. I live at 586 Woodbury Avenue here in Portsmouth. I participated in the Portsmouth Listens process that was overseen by the city over the last couple of years. I'm a water utility lawyer by background. I've actually negotiated public-private partnerships for very large water systems, worked with the folks that operate systems as large as like the city of Indianapolis, cross-examined those that run the system in Atlanta, or at least used to. So, I'm familiar with public-private partnership concepts, and I want you to know that, because I'm here to ask you not to go back to the development agreement that was negotiated several years ago, because it was done wrong. The basic kind of best practices weren't followed, and the result reflects that. It's not a great design. It's boxy. It's overbuilt. I think, you know, anyone that goes to Siri's Bakery now, you know, can see what happens when you try to build too intensively, where there's not enough workspace. You can't fit what you're trying to build there easily. And I feel bad. I haven't gone to that bakery in years after going there, you know, almost every day for a very long time, decades. One of the key concepts is an agreed-upon public design prepared by the city that then is exposed to the market and to bidders, so that everyone is on the same page and competing for the same goal and design objectives. And that's what happened in this last process. Now, I know this council has changed. There's probably disagreement with many of you with what the other council did, but I'd suggest that even a blind squirrel gets a nut, is the saying that comes to my mind here. I think they used the right process. The principal group was very well-prepared in how they managed it, and the result's a good one that the public agreed on. I mean, all of the groups that I heard from, and there were 23 of them, wanted more open space. The other thing that you see in the result of the development agreement, if you go back to that, $100,000. I did some research. I'll hand it out for you. I'm about to run out of time, so I'll do this after my bell goes off. 4,500 square feet of office space behind market baskets produces the same revenue for one office that you're going to get for rent from this 2.3-acre site with an existing building. It's a really bad deal on a really bad design. What I'd suggest is stick with what you've got, work through the process, and you'll come up with a much better result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Good evening. Rick Beckstead, 1395 Islington Street. I wasn't necessarily going to speak tonight, depending on what was said. Reading the agenda and I guess receiving the vote, I'm not sure what that accomplishes. I'm sure we hopefully are going to find out after public comment is over and you take up the rest of the agenda. The way that I see it is we'll return to November 17th, and we're in a lawsuit that Michael Kane had gone and done after we had gone and basically not dissolved the relationship or the partnership, but we rejected the ground lease, which is what enabled this lawsuit to begin with. And it was to basically start negotiations on something new, but to be able to right a lot of wrongs. And righting wrongs, to hear Mr. Binney, and I haven't seen Mr. Binney since I sat on position nine on the previous council that I sat on for two years, to be told that no one from the city had even reached out to a man that put the time and energy into something is disheartening, almost as disheartening as I had to apologize to 600 residents that signed a petition that was vaguely ignored by eight other councillors, again, on a previous council. It just seemed that we're going backwards when we need to go forward. We've all got to remember, and councillor Tabor and Mayor McKeconan know this, Big Brother is now watching, we did extremely well. This committee, this commission that we did for two years, did some outstanding work. We have a public that is energized over a new project. We fixed a process. We have approvals, tentative approvals, for the National Park Service on a design. Our previous partner, that is still not our partner today, couldn't even pull that off. We did, as a council, as a committee, as a city. We worked together. I don't understand why we're bowing to threat of litigation. You have 12 people, and one of them is here tonight, I see, that is threatening to sue the city over something illegal. It was no illegal action. It was told that it was violation of the right to know. The leader of this group really knows what the violation of right to know is. He himself partook in the commission on the previous council, which met for the better part of 18 months, and never shared when the meetings were. No minutes were ever taken. And it wasn't within three months of his reelection that he then go start the process. The group did as far as noticing the meetings and taking minutes. So, this other litigation is nonsense, is unprovable, and is a waste of people's time. I wouldn't even entertain it. You can't entertain every lawsuit that comes through. I'm sorry. You've got to have some guts, and you've got to be able to move forward and see what's right for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Peter Huda, 280 South Street, Portsmouth. First of all, good evening, mayor and city council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to finally address the McIntyre in public without being filtered. My first question is basically a statement and a question. This contract was terminated by notice of November 26th, 78 days ago. Please explain how this motion will affect the termination of the contract 76 days after it happened per contract law. And most of these are going to be addressed to you, Mr. Sullivan. My next question is, for the benefit of the residents and the taxpayers, what legal justification was given to the council for taking this action that we're here tonight to discuss? I ask you, Bob, to cite your sources and what it is based on. As I see a conflict with Roberts Rules, Section 37, in that to rescind something that was already done and it affected another person, and I will read you the whole writing here, this is an exemption against the rescinding rules. Basically, it says, "Votes cannot be rescinded after something has been done as a result of that vote, and the assembly cannot undo it." To terminate a contract is basically undoable, especially 76 days after it happened, or where it is in the nature of a contract and the other party has been informed. That happened on November 26th. That's my question, and I would like to hear the Sullivan twist on that one. The next thing I'd like to do is actually give you a summary of why I voted for what I did on November 18th, in contrast to what's been stated all over the place by certain councillors and everybody else. My decision was based on the facts to terminate the Red Gate Kane contract. My decision was based on the original contract, the ground lease, the NPS rejection, and the quotes from Mr. Kane that just kept on coming. The first thing I'd like to note is the letter we received from Mr. Kane, Mr. Kane's attorney, before we even took office, threatening us. Second happening, Kane filed a lawsuit against us just after we voted to get rid of the ground lease. It was never voted and ratified by the council. Then it started with the lawsuits and the quotes after we went through all the other stuff. Are you going to let me finish, or do I have to cut it off?
How much more time do you have?
Basically, I just want to go through what the rationale is and ask the council if they really want to do business with this type of partner.
I'm going to have to ask you to stop if you want to share that digitally with us.
Hi. Good evening, councillors, Mayor McKeconan, City Manager. I'm Doug Roberts, 247 Richards Avenue. I am one of 13 plaintiffs who filed the right-to-know suit in Superior Court, asking it to invalidate the November 18th meeting, which a five-member majority of the council voted to terminate the city's contract for the redevelopment of the McIntyre building. I'm here tonight with a number of other people who were on this, including Barbara Sadek, Byron Mato, Patrick Ellis, and Effie Malley. We filed the suit because we felt that the way the November 18th meeting was conducted was improper and a violation of the public trust. The vote to terminate the agreement was an extremely important decision, yet it was done without notice to the public or even all councillors. Our goal from the beginning is to emphasize the importance of good governance and the importance of following the rules. In New Hampshire, RSA 91A, the right-to-know law establishes minimum standards for public access to meetings and documents. In the plain language of the law, if the charter of any city or town, or guidelines, or rules of order of any public body require broader public access to official meetings and records, then herein describe such charter provisions, or guidelines, or rules of order shall take precedence over the right-to-know law. Portsmouth, of course, has Rule 2, which says councillors need to be notified directly of a special meeting, and only matters set forth in the notice of the meeting shall be discussed or acted upon. The notice for November 18th was obviously deficient in that it did not include basically anything that happened at that meeting. We support the move tonight to rescind the November 18th meeting, although we are not here to defend or support Red Gate Kane. Like most residents, we are generally okay with the plan developed with the principal group, though important details have yet to be worked out. We believe that this council, if it does decide to rescind the November 18th vote, and months from now it turns out that it too cannot work with Red Gate Kane, the option to go in a different direction will remain, and the city will be on firmer legal ground. That said, we hope the council tonight will recognize that the meeting on November 18th was not good government. We can disagree on the issues, but we need to agree on the rules. I only have a tiny bit left.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate it. Cut everybody else off, so I'm going to have to ask you.
All right. Well, we support the way the council's going, and we hope that you'll come up with good rules.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Let's, we're asking people to come up and speak for three minutes. I've tried to keep to that. If we could please be respectful as other folks are speaking, I would very much appreciate that. that. Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you, Mayor McKecon, Counselor Tabor, who sat on the McIntyre Committee. You all know that I spent thousands of hours working that, and we had over 50 meetings. So just a couple of things on the meeting that took place on 11/18, where we took the vote to essentially terminate the agreement with Redgate Kane. The meeting was duly noticed. Nothing illegal or criminal about it, except if you read about it on Facebook. The motion was proper. The vote was legal. The city attorney knew that I was going to make that motion at 2:00 that afternoon. There were two non-public meetings weeks before that. The entire council kind of knew what was going on. I'm not going to get into that, because that was a non-public. So why did we do it? We terminated the development agreement, which was in place. That's what we did. We returned the $400,000 deposit to Redgate Kane. We properly noticed the termination from Attorney Connolly to Redgate Kane. Formal letter was sent. And an RFP was developed to develop a new plan to go forward. So the thought was, we were going to continue our legal action against Redgate Kane and go with a new development partner and build the people's plan. That's what we were going to do. And why did we do it? We did it to protect the residents, and it was the right thing to do. Any sane person looking at the facts over two years that I did would make that same decision. Redgate Kane acted in bad faith over two years, launching a lawsuit three weeks prior to the election, bashing, belittling the people's plan, calling into question the city's and its residents' hard work that worked on the principal plan, that I spent thousands of hours working with the principal group to try to get through in the city. This is not someone you want to partner with for the next 75 years. My experience over the years as a turnaround guy for corporate and union and financial problems tells me that when a partnership is toxic, and there is bad-faith dealing, after trying everything, it's time to move on. And that's what we did with Redgate Kane. The city has moved on. We have a new plan through the principal group, and that's something that we've got to work toward. The residents are watching this council. Outsourcing this decision to the city manager is a wrong decision. You, representative residents of Portsmouth, you need to be involved and be strong on this. We need to move forward with the people's plan and jettison Redgate Kane. That needs to happen immediately. I would urge you not to reverse the council's decision. Continue the path. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor, City Manager and Staff, Byron Mado, 17 Fields As much as I've enjoyed seeing you in the months of September and October last year, I haven't minded the minor slowdown in my civic life. I'm here tonight, first and foremost, to support this council and the proposed motion to rescind the vote taken on November 18th of last year. As I understand it, the mayor has said this action is at the advice of this council. It seems reasonable to me, and I'm sure the process trying to negotiate current litigation would benefit from such action. The point I'm here to press on, however, is centered squarely on good governance. The November 8th vote to terminate the development agreement was not on the agenda of the special meeting called by Mayor Beckstead. In fact, the only thing on the agenda was that the council would seek to have non-public with Redgate Kane. This is incongruent with the council rules adopted by the same counselor earlier in that year. This is unacceptable regardless of the subject, and even more so considering the great consequences of that particular action. As a co-complainant along with Mr. Roberts, my motivation is to draw attention to and assure that governing bodies act in good faith and follow the rules they themselves agree to. As it stands today, the New Hampshire Superior Code is the only mechanism a citizen has to hold account those who have not executed in good faith the rules of transparent governance. This, I believe, is too high a burden. That is, we should aim to have more mechanisms at the local level to prevent elected officials from taking actions without proper notice. My hope is that the newly-formed Governance Committee headed by Counselor Cook will look at this specific case as a data point. Can we amend the charter to prevent councils from taking action that are not specified in meetings' agenda? What else can we do? I am not here in any way wanting to help or assist Redgate Kane. Any assertion that our filing is for that person fails basic scrutiny. Those who make the claim either misunderstand intent or willfully betray the public discourse. I would just like to say I get lunch at Sirius more times a week than is probably healthy and is still delicious. I'd like to thank the mayor and this council for considering this action tonight and hope they follow through. Thank you, and it's good to see you all on that side of the bench.
Thank you, Byron. Guys, if we could keep the clapping down, I appreciate that there's points that we agree with, but we're focused on listening, and I'd appreciate if we could hold the clapping to the end.
Hello, counselors. My name is Jeffrey Cooper. I live at 227 Park Street in Portsmouth. I read the newspaper today, and the headlines said that the council was about to reunite with Redgate Kane. I was rather surprised by that. I'm hoping that that's an overstatement of what's really this is about. Went on to read that this was about rescinding the November 18th decision, which frankly, when I read about it on November 19th, I was actually myself quite surprised, because it was done in a lame-duck session and a 5 to 4 vote, and I personally didn't think that that was appropriate. I really felt that it really should have been left to this council to handle that. So this is kind of what other people have been saying, and what I focus on, to what to me is the real question, is whether or not Redgate Kane is willing to build what the citizens of Portsmouth really want to happen there, or whether Redgate Kane is going to continue his efforts to try and force the city to build his project, which was approved by the 2019 council, but rejected by the National Park Service. And everything that I've seen, the tea leaves, indicates to me that that still is his goal, to force the city to approve and build his project. And I think that's really an unfortunate situation. So regarding the motion to rescind the November 18th meeting, I don't know about, you know, I'm hearing a lot about the technicalities of whether the meeting was legal, appropriate, this or that, or whatever. You may have legalistic reasons why you need to rescind that. If you decide to do that, I respect that. But seeing as how I don't really see any indication that Kane is willing to build what the citizens want to happen, as I said at the beginning, I was shocked to see that it was a lame-duck session that fired him. I really felt that firing really should have fallen to you, that if you rescind the November 18th meeting, which I understand may be necessary, that unless we have some sort of indication from Kane that he's willing to build what the citizens want to be built there, then it's incumbent on you to also fire him yourselves after that and terminate that relation, because everything I've seen in the entire relation with Kane has been completely dysfunctional. The fact that he's suing the city, how you could possibly consider our development partner with somebody who's suing us, you know, I mean, those are the suits that need to be dropped. I mean, the suit from these people over here seems to me rather a nuisance kind of suit. The real problem is with Kane, not with the people here. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Ken Goldman, 271 Islington Street. I was really confused by what I heard from a lot of people earlier this evening. I didn't think we were here to discuss whether Redgate Kane's ideas for McIntyre were the right ideas or the wrong ideas. I thought the reason we were here was to decide whether or not the meeting on November 18th was appropriate and whether or not it should be rescinded. Whether what Redgate Kane wants to do for the McIntyre and how the city wants to work with them, I think is a separate but related issue. So, you know, I would like to just say that I hope that we stay focused on the real reason why we're here, or at least what I think it is, and just focus on whether or not that meeting should be rescinded, and that's really why we're here. Once that decision is made, then you folks can go ahead and figure out the right way to handle McIntyre, and I expect that you will. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Good evening, everyone. Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street. I would agree with the gentleman. I think that's true. However, if you look at the agenda, it also mentions Sobo Square as well as Doug Roberts. So it's more expansive than just that. I'm pretty confused. Now, Mayor, maybe you could guide us and inform us, or City Manager, Mr. Sullivan. I would ask this: Do we have the same current council that you referred to on the decision based for this as we did on November 18th? Have there been any additions or subtractions, or loss of faculties since that day? Because what I'm confused about is how did the same legal counsel, which authorized the actions of November 18th, get us to tonight? So, Mr. Sullivan, I guess that question goes to you as the attorney, or Mr. Connolly? Because unless someone fell on the slippery ice and lost some faculties, it doesn't add up. Okay, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I would agree with Mr. Binney, that I read the contracts, I read all Mr. Falbey's comments from Boston. Now, the extension from January 30th to the 28th of February in Rockingham County makes sense because he couldn't attend. And it says explicitly that the city may not engage in a potential developer. It did not limit it to acknowledgement. We didn't have any acknowledgement as far as the correspondence to Mr. Binney and his team, and I think that is poor form. And as a citizen, I would ask you to reconsider that in the future. Now, based on that, I agree that we're not getting into Redgate Kane at this point, but I did want to share with you this. We had the benefit, as you know, of legal counsel under Paul McKecon, and boy, do I miss him these days. He was our North Star, and I reflexively have wanted to call him so many times the last two weeks. So I took the time to read every position paper he had, as well as the representative of Redgate Kane. And we can go back and forth, but I think this summarizes his position on the whole thing. Keep in mind, the application period terminated September 7th of 2019. That was in the development agreement. Anything that came after that is pretty much a jump ball, even though we have the interim agreement. But this will be my final comment. It is important to note that the failure to vote or agree on a form of a ground lease by the city council does not create a default situation, as the opposition claims, but is simply a failure to reach an agreement in the development agreement. If the parties are unable to reach agreement on the ground lease prior to the application, then the parties may terminate this agreement. So there is no great exposure, and I believe at this juncture, it's a jump ball legally, but I think the Herald has done us disservice by exploiting it and overstating the position. So I hope you take that in consideration. Thank you.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. On the 18th, I know the mayor and all of us, we have emails, and we could stand here and do proof that that meeting was felt to be set up appropriately by the city. That night, after our vote, I said I gave the next council a gift. And it got taken wrongly in the paper, and that's okay. But we did. It had not been nothing but two years of threatened lawsuit. Now, Mr. Kane has sued the city multiple of times, so that's not abnormal. But the one thing we knew is, the people's plan needed to be built. And in order to deal with that people's plan, we needed to stop the agreement and the contract, which is what we did. We've asked to have a non-public meeting. We voted to have the non-public meetings opened, because if they were open, the last one did stay open. And I can share with you that I shared everything that I was going to say on the 18th in that meeting, and other people shared a lot of information, too. We got fights and kickbacks from certain counselors, because they didn't want what was said in those non-publics to become public. What I'm coming forward tonight is, you have a contract that was no longer valid. The contract was terminated. You are going to have to make a new contract, no matter how you look at it, with Mr. Kane. And you are going to have to decide if you are going to make this contract with this particular developer. The contract was determined, and an RFP went out. The city accepted that RFP. The city management and city attorney put that RFP out to the public. Mr. Binney applied. Kathleen Coleroy applied. We had people apply to an RFP that was put out by our city. You have to ask yourself, I can tell you on the 18th, we didn't do anything wrong. And we'll deal with that in Superior Court. But you do have to ask yourself about that contract. And what are you going to put in the contract for Mr. Binney, or Mr. Kane? What are you going to make that contract like? And are you going to include the people's choice? That's the question this council has tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther.
I think when you listen to the speakers, you do focus on the idea that the lawsuits focus on, did the prior council appropriate call and conduct the meeting, as has been cited here tonight? And others have cited their opinion of the law. I certainly don't have an opinion in that regard. What I have been involved in in numerous situations where you have to take a vote, both in serving in What Sky, with legal implications here for the city of Portsmouth, as well as for Rockingham County. And typically, when you're in a situation such as we were at that time, and a vote is called, and the vote is 5 to 4, if at that time Counselor McKecon, who's now mayor, and Counselor Tabor, who was there, typically you don't vote. You don't vote negatively, because what you're trying to say is you're against it. That's different than saying, "I disagree with Counselor Sullivan that this meeting was called." So I would ask the mayor and Mr. Tabor why they didn't recuse themselves from the meeting, and make the point to the city attorney and the city manager at that time that they weren't going to vote on the issue, because they didn't feel the meeting was appropriately called and was appropriately conducted. So you have to ask yourself, why did the mayor and the Counselor Tabor change their We talk about the Beckstead 5, but we never talk about the Blaylock 8. I've lived in this city now going on 15 years. This is a sad day, because you're being, for reasons that you won't explain to us. This is right up there with the Weber case, which we still don't have the facts Attorney Sullivan on, because you hide behind lawsuits.
Patricia Bagley, 213 Pleasant Street. I'm glad Bill Downey is confused, because I thought I was the only one. About the only thing that hasn't been confusing in the last two years was the vote taken in November that you want to rescind. It was the only thing that made sense after two years of trying to develop a property with a developer who doesn't want to develop what who doesn't want to develop what we want. We've built many houses, too many houses over the years. And if we had a plan to build a house, and our contractor said, "I don't want to build that. I want to build my design," we would get a new contractor. And we've been putting up with this for two years. He didn't want to build what we wanted. He wanted to build what he wanted. The council took a vote. I don't see anything illegal about it. It was, it was a meeting that was noted, noted to the public. So counselors are not allowed to make a motion and vote on it? Are you voting on this motion tonight to rescind? I mean, that's the other part of my confusion. Are we just talking to air? I know you're listening, but has your mind already been made up when you came tonight? Because this is a special meeting that you called to consider this. So are you voting this to rescind the previous vote? Because what else is at stake right now, which Doug Roberts referred to as a violation of trust, is exactly that. The violation of trust falls on this council if you rescind the previous council's vote. It says as much about you as it does about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
How's it going? Chuck Ray, 21 Wallace Road, Maple Haven, Portsmouth. I'd just like to say, since this meeting was called to help get us out from under the cloud of the lawsuit and enable you to move forward, thank you. And I hope this allows you to move forward in an appropriate way from here on out. So thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
We do have one hand on Zoom, and oh, looks like Page Trace is approaching the microphone.
Mayor McEckernan, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Page Trace, 27 Hancock Street. I stand before you tonight. It's been suggested that you've already made up your minds. That's something that only you can decide. We've heard some pretty eloquent people speaking tonight. One thing I do know is that I was once in Counselor Cook's seat, not too long ago. I was on the council of nine, who supposedly called an illegal meeting. Now, I'm one of, I was one of nine. The mayor called a special meeting just like this one. And as a city counselor, I showed up, just like all of you do, every meeting. Because we all, whether it was us, or whether it's you, or the council of, as they say, the Blaylock 8, we work for the residents. We worked for the residents. So you show up. And when the mayor says, "Be there," you are. So I showed up as one of nine. And it was a duly noticed meeting. Attorney Sullivan, you had plenty of time, sir, with all due respect, to tell us it wasn't. We showed up. Counselor Whalen made a motion. He asked the mayor, I remember it specifically, if the mayor would entertain the motion. And the mayor said yes. That is the mayor's job. And Counselor Whalen proceeded to make his motion. And I listened intently. It was the first time I'd heard that motion, but I paid attention. And I felt it was worth seconding it. So I did. But it was a duly noticed meeting. It was a duly made motion by a sitting city counselor, and I seconded it, and we voted. We, the members of that council. And we worked for the same residents that you do. So I am here to say to all of you, I can't tell you how to vote your conscience, but I can remind you that you work for all of us now, just as we worked for you. And I would thank you to go on and go forth, and Attorney Sullivan, sir, and City Manager Kennard, you both had plenty of time to tell us it was an illegal meeting, or an illegal motion, or an illegal vote. And none of that was true. So I thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. It's great to see you. If there are no other speakers in the room, you don't have to, you don't have to speak, but I do want to get through all of the public speakers before we get to the Zoom.
Hi, my name's Mike Oaks, and I live at 315 Little Harbor Road. And I've lived in this city all my life. And I think that this is really a shame of what's going on. I think Kane is the wrong person, so I, the vote, I think, was the right thing to do to get rid of him. Because if all he does is, every time something doesn't go right for him, he's into the litigation thing, with any business, you can always lose money. That's his gamble. If it didn't work out, so be it, you know? But we shouldn't have to pay for that. And I don't understand how he can even sue the city over something like that. You know, but I just, like, right now, if the city of Portsmouth wasn't able to get this property, I think that would be the best thing. Because then who's he going to sue then? The National Park Service? I don't know. I just, I know you guys have a hard job, but I just think it's wrong.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one hand on Zoom.
Kate Hatum, please go ahead and give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kate Hatum, 1 Ash Street in Portsmouth. I just wanted to say thank you to this council for trying to manage and lead our city with respect, maturity, value for experts, and collaboration. There's obviously a lot of work to be done to course correct for many rash and irresponsible decisions of the past council. So I just wanted to say that I fully support this council to make informed and responsible decisions regarding the November 18th vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, with that, I am going to move on to the motion. And I just want to, I should have probably said more at the beginning. First, and we'll allow Attorney Sullivan to speak. I know there were some specific legal questions around that. Why I didn't, why I'm not calling this meeting is to, is to really dig into the legality of the previous meeting on the November 18th. I am also not calling this meeting to, as was the headline, I can't pick the headlines in the press, of reuniting with Mr. Kane and Sobo Square. I called this meeting because upon advice from council, our best path forward to best position the city legally was to rescind how we terminated the contract. That is it. And so while I appreciate there was a lot of passionate discussion on the future with Sobo Square, or the notice of the meeting, that is not why we are here tonight. We are here because our attorney in this matter suggested that this was the way that we would best position the city of Portsmouth going forward. So I await the motion as written. Counselor Moreau.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we move that all actions taken by the city council at its meeting on November 18th, 2021, including but not limited to termination of the development agreement between Red Gate Kane doing business as Sobo Square LLC and the city, and hereby rescinded.
Second.
Could I ask the attorney to, to answer some of the questions and better define the legal advice that we received before this, before any other discussion?
I'll do what I can, Your Honor. I think it's important for the citizens of the city to understand that the city itself is in a extremely complicated and very high-stakes litigation situation. In an action brought by Red Gate Kane, seeking millions of dollars, a lot of different things have occurred, much of it was discussed tonight, which have created a complex and interlocking set of developments which leave the city exposed to that case. We now have a second case against the city, which does have the effect, whether intended or not, of assisting the Red Gate Kane action against the city. The council that you have in front of you now is going to be called upon to make a series of difficult decisions to try to deal with that situation. What we're asking tonight with this motion, which, as you heard, is recommended strongly by council, not only by myself, but by outside counsel, Michael Connolly, Hinkley Allen Law Firm, what this motion represents is just one tiny little baby step to try to find the pathway out of the situation that we are all in. It is not intended to lead to any final result. It is just the next step. Your counselors have the benefit of having had a very lengthy non-public discussion of this complicated situation with Attorney Connolly and myself. Unfortunately, we cannot share the, everything that got said in that conversation with the citizens at large, because to do so would share those very same things with the people who are suing us. And if I can analogize to a chess game, as the council determines what moves it will make to move forward, it would obviously not be a good idea, as it would not be a good idea in a chess game, if the council were to tell the opposition tonight, for example, why it is going to do, what it's going to do, and what its next step will be. These steps have to be worked out one at a time. And that's what we're trying to do tonight, just a very small one. Depending upon what happens tonight, then there'll be other steps to be determined. You have to trust your city council, that they will approach them, approach these intelligently as they are approaching this one. As the past council approached issues, I, I worked every single one of those meetings, the former counsel of Whalen mentioned, of the McIntyre Subcommittee, I thought the McIntyre Subcommittee did a fantastic job. It is their work that has produced the community plan that the citizens seem to like so much better than the original plan. And that certainly makes the community plan a goal. But to reach the goal, you have to take those many steps, of which we're asking for one, on that long and winding path that we haven't even determined yet. And this is our thinking behind the motion that Attorney Connolly and I are suggesting, are recommending, strongly recommending, be passed tonight by this council. There was a great deal of wisdom that came from the public comment session tonight. I am sure that the council listened to it. I did. I agreed with a tremendous amount of what got said. And we are going to try to take the good things that got said and, and make this problem come out in such a way that what the people of the city want to be accomplished will be accomplished. But we need to start somewhere. And I'm recommending, Attorney Connolly's recommending, we start by the passage of this motion.
Counselor Moreau, then Counselor Tabor.
And I know Attorney Sullivan will definitely shut me down if I say something I'm not supposed to, but I just want everyone to understand that our, by our vote or decision, whatever decision that we make tonight, has in no way dictated what will get built on that property. And honestly, one doesn't have a direct link even to the other. We're just looking for the pathway forward, as he's spoken about. And this is what we see as the most reasonable pathway forward to make sure that the citizens get what they deserve. That's all.
Counselor Tabor, then Counselor Dutton.
Thanks, Your Honor. It's been good to hear from all of you. It's helped each of us, and I know it's helped me reflect on my vote tonight, and, and check all my assumptions, and, and do my own gut check. I do think that we should vote to rescind. First, I think the meeting of the 18th, it wasn't such a problem for those of us who were not in the majority. It was a problem for the public. I said at the time, how is the public to know that this motion was going to be voted tonight? And there wasn't any packet, there wasn't any warning. And that's what the open meeting laws are all about. So I don't think it was good process. And I don't think that that's a good thing to do. And also, the majority voted not to hear from legal counsel. So not good process, potentially, very costly for the city, and in some ways, not a very defensible case for the city. I also support this step because it removes an impediment to what was a long process that we did as the McIntyre Subcommittee. We had a survey that showed the developer, the community, wanted something with more public benefit and less mass on Bow Street, and its set priorities around that. And then we had study circles with hundreds of people that derived the people's plan with the principal group. Then the city won consideration from the Park Service for things that had not been achieved before, particularly over the post office wing, which in turn would allow less density on Bow Street. We never got to finish the process to see if the community plan is feasible, and if so, how do we do it? That's the ultimate unanswered question. I say, let's answer that. If we can find a way forward, that ends the lawsuit. If we can't, we pursue other options. Let's keep the main thing the main thing, which is to get something built on the site that the community will use and enjoy. And I think this step removes an obstacle to that. And that's why I support it.
Counselor Dutton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I simply want to highlight something that both Mr. Bill Downey and Mr. Jeffrey Cooper said, that the contract which was terminated back in November had a clause in it which gave the city a way out of that contract. By rescinding that vote, there's still a way out in that contract if we can't come to an agreement with Mr. Kane on something that resembles the people's plan, which is abundantly clear that lots of people support. Thank you.
Counselor Blaylock, then Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate everyone coming here to speak tonight. I appreciate all, everyone that cares about Portsmouth, really. That's why we're all here, that's why you're all here. That's why we're all here, that's why you're all here. It's an honor to serve this town. It's an honor. All right, the reason why we're here tonight is to right some wrongs. I was a member of the public here November 18th, that meeting. I had read the agenda. It said it was anticipated it would go to a non-public session. I proceeded to call to see if I should even go, because I'm like, if they're going to go to a non-public session, I'm probably going to go. They're going to go to a non-public session, I'm wasting my time. That was very misleading to the public. Tonight, we have informed you that we have public comment. We've announced the meeting several days before. There's listed public comment. I believe that is a little more generous and less disingenuous, a little more information for the public. We want to do good governments. We do not, we want to make all decisions while we're seated here. I, when I sit down in this chair, I do not know how I'm going to vote on anything. I have ideas, but I'm ready to listen to the public. I'm ready to listen to my fellow councillors. I'm ready to listen to the mayor, our legal counsel. So, I don't know until that vote is taken. But tonight, we're here to move forward, do what's right for the city. I think that meeting on November 18th was a violation of trust. It was not properly noticed. Tonight, we're trying to do the right thing, properly noticed, and get back to work. Thank you.
Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I actually didn't come to this meeting. My sister had a routine procedure at the hospital the next morning, so I drove down to spend the night there. You know, I, I think it's, maybe it could have been noticed better, but it's, it's really incumbent on me as a citizen to participate if I think something important is going to come up. So, while I agree, there could have been a better job noticing it. It's, it's probably 50% my fault for not showing up to speak to it. So, I, I'm not so concerned with, with how the meeting was or wasn't noticed. And I'm not so concerned with the vote in particular. What I am concerned with is, I'm now a representative of the city, and, and my thoughts have to take a, a backseat. And we're faced with, you know, some significant, as Attorney Sullivan said, legal situation. And, you know, some of you know me, and you probably know I'm not a lawyer. So, in a significant legal situation, I think the smart thing for me to do is to listen to the advice of our inside counsel and our highly qualified outside counsel. And in this particular case, I really wish I could share with you what they said in the meeting, but that's not apparently how it works. And I think the chess game analogy was pretty good on explaining why that is. Still wish I could share. I'm, I'm probably an oversharer. I'm not a lawyer. We're facing significant legal issues. I've got advice from a very good city attorney and a very good outside counsel on what I should do. And I appreciate everyone speaking tonight. And perhaps my opinion could have been swayed to, to not vote on the recommendations of the legal advice I've received, but I haven't heard anything that tells me that the, the people speaking tonight, who don't know the case as well as the legal experts that spoke to me in non-public, do have a, a better set of advice for me. So, I'm going to vote along with this motion. I'm disappointed that we have to move so quickly on this, but, you know, the, the schedule is what the schedule is. There's a lot of things in this city I'd rather be focused on than this particular item. But legal advice is that we have to do it, and, and we have to do it sooner rather than later. So, here we all are tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes. I was, I've been thinking about just the council in general, and one of the things I've considered is that people talk about the old council, people talk about the new council. I don't believe that's true. I think there's one council. There's, there's been a council for, with hundreds of people that have participated, contributed their, their time and wisdom to this council. And I am honored and really humbled to be part of that. And I've listened very carefully to the citizens who have spoken, and I've listened very carefully to the legal counsel that we've received. I want to see something good at McIntyre. And I think that the, the projects that have been developed that are more to the residents' liking are, are superior. And I've listened to counsel who says, "This is a step to get there." So, I'm going to vote for this as well.
Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make it clear that my goal here on councils to make sure that the citizens, all citizens are represented, but to understand that all citizens have different opinions. My goal is not to invalidate the hard work of the Subcommittee of the last council, or the opinions of the 600-plus citizens that put in all the time and effort in the people's plan, nor is it to invalidate all of the people from 2017 to 2019 who worked on the original plan. My vote will not guarantee that Red Gate Kane wins a contract with the city. I do promise that I will make sure that we can build a plan that is good for all. But we need to take steps forward, and we cannot take steps forward if we are constantly tied down in litigation with this project. I understand that not everyone in this room has the same opinion, but we all love our community. We all need to trust that we can move together. We can move forward together, and we need to move forward together. And I personally think, and I will be supporting this motion, that this is the best foot forward at this point in time.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here tonight simply to act on advice from legal counsel on the best path forward at this point. We, of course, have a long history with this project as a council, not just this council, the prior council, the council before. I think that everyone on the council is always trying to act in the best interest of the city. And in this case, I'm supporting this action because this is the path that our legal counsel has advised us to take. And it's just one more step that we need to take to eventually have a project built at the McIntyre site. So, I will support it. I thank you all for your comments. I wrote down notes on what everyone said here tonight. It's wonderful to hear from all residents of the city. It's wonderful to know where you stand, because we have a lot of difficult decisions ahead of us with regard to this project. And I, for one, will always listen to what you have to say and weigh those, those comments when moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that everyone came out tonight. I, I truly do. I appreciate that everyone was civil tonight. It's difficult, I think, to hear, for me, about a lack of trust. We have to earn your trust. We are not here to represent one group over another. We're here to represent the city of Portsmouth. I love all of you, because I love this town. I love that you've shown up tonight and have shared what you believe with us. I've listened, I've taken notes. It's impactful when people share what they believe. I, I can't help but dwell on one comment. Bill Downey shared that he wishes a lawyer by the name of Paul McKeckren was here, and so that he could ask him questions. Well, Bill, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you on that sentiment. I wish my father was here for this and, and many reasons. But a piece of advice that my dad gave to me was to always listen to your attorney. I called this meeting, and I gave this meeting notice, not because of what happened with a, how a previous meeting was called, not because of what we would be committing to in terms of a development partner, but simply because our legal counsel said that the best course of action for the city of Portsmouth was that we call this meeting and rescind the actions of November 18th. And for that reason, I called that meeting. And for that reason, I will be supporting this action tonight. I appreciate everyone that is coming out. And with that, I would ask Valerie to call the roll.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Tabor.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McKeckren.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Please, no clapping. We're not, we, we don't come into the City Hall and clap if we agree and we don't agree. We come to participate in a civil discourse. We have to. I'd really appreciate that if we could, we could follow that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.